Okay, we're back from closed session. Um, Catherine, do we have anything to report out from closed session? Catherine, hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, is there anything to report out from closed session?
No, no reportable action was taken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will adjourn closed session and commence on open session, okay? Um, do we really start with public comment, you guys? I don't remember that. Yeah? Is there any public comment? Not seeing any public comment. We will move on to item three, which is the consent calendar. Um, three A is approved the minutes from August 25th. Three B is approved executive director's signature of the 2025 FTA certs and assurances. And three C is approved release of request for proposals for Williams Drive EV charging stations, charge management system.
I did have one question about, uh, three C, the charge management system. Joe, I get what Pacific Power is saying about using power during the off times to get a cheaper rate, stuff like that. I was curious about the weight of the savings that we would get on the power usage versus how much this evaluation and RFP is going to cost us. I mean, are we, that was not in the, in the, uh, agenda here as far as how much it's going to cost versus how much this RFP is going to save us. So, do you have anything for us for that?
Yeah, um, it's a great question.
Maybe we don't know it right now.
Right, yeah, we won't know the cost until we open the proposals in like a month or so. Um, I expect it's going to be, you know, in, in the...
Oh?
Yeah. On audio.
Oh, that's better.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, I don't, we won't know exactly what the cost of having the charge management system will be added to the project, but the overall projects, the EV charging projects, like three, four million, I think this will just be a small percentage on top of that. And if it can save us money each month on the electric bills to where we spend less on electricity than we were before on fossil fuels, which is kind of really how this, to me, if it's successful or not, it's going to kind of hinge on how much it costs us to, to charge. Um, so if this helps us be successful with that and, and have a net savings in, um, operating costs with EVs versus the current gasoline vehicles that they'll be replacing, I think it'll be well worth it, but we won't really know until we get our costs in. Um, I don't think it's going to be hugely expensive. Um, but yeah, we don't know yet until the RFP.
Yeah, I was just, my thought was like, if we just plug it in willy nilly and use power at peak times and get charged the most versus the off times, would we save a thousand dollars a year, ten thousand dollars a year, you know?
That's a good question. I think if you're closer to the latter one, you know.
If this RFP costs us a hundred thousand dollars, you know, that'd be like 10 years to pay off kind of thing.
True. I don't have that information.
So we just don't know yet, but so we're going to investigate how much this is going to save us.
Right, one thing I will say is it's not really, I don't think we really wrote it out too much in, in the document, but we received pro bono help with this RFP from Cal, from Caltrans, from the Cal ITP group, because they want, they know we're kind of ahead of most of the other small rules on this particular aspect of this project, so they want to use us as a case study so they can help educate other smaller players that are coming along like us to maybe help, help them learn from our experience. So, yeah, we're, we've been getting free help, but you know, of course I have had to put some hours into it, but it's, to me, it's a, it's a terse expense, so I do bill it to the, to the capital project, not to our...
Good deal, okay. Caltrans wants to experiment on us, right on.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just kidding. Um, with that, I will, uh, move that we approve the three items on the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Moisa, could you pull the vote, please?
Director Short?
Yes.
Director Borges?
Yes.
Chairman, Vice Chairman Altman?
Yes. Thank you so much.
There's some noise talking somewhere.
Oh. Okay, let's move on to agenda item five, which is, uh, oh, I should ask, is there any public comment on the consent calendar? We don't have any public, so I'm going to move on to number five. Short range transit plan, presentation of draft final SRTP and discussion.
Thank you, Vice Chair Altman, and, um, thank you for, uh, for being here tonight. Um, our presentation's going to be delivered by our consultant team tonight from LSC Transportation Consultants. We have Genevieve Evans and Chris Sterner, who've been our two primary points of contact helping us with the plan. They're going to go ahead and walk us through the, um, the PowerPoint they prepared for this. This is the one that we had on last month, so nothing's changed since then. Uh, and then, um, after this, next steps, we're hoping to get some feedback for the consultants on the draft final, and then this will be brought back to, to this board for approval at a meeting to be determined, but probably like mid, mid-December. Um, so do you give us time to incorporate and analyze the comments, get them in there, and then do a final for the board adoption before the end of the year? So, if, unless there are any questions at this point, I'll turn it over to Genevieve.
All right. Thank you, Joe, and good evening, Board. Uh, again, I'm Genevieve Evans, I'm a principal with LSC Transportation Consultants, and Chris Sterner is also a planner at LSC, and he's done the bulk of the work, so he's going to interrupt me if I say anything wrong or provide more details. Uh, first, a quick reminder, I know you've been hearing about this process that we've been working on for about a year now, but what a short range transit plan is and what we're trying to achieve here is we think of a short range transit plan as a business plan for Redwood Coast Transit, and it should provide guidance for staff and the board as to, uh, what to implement and how to, uh, spend your money over the next few years. We start with a look at existing conditions, we look at, um, where different folks who are likely to ride the bus live, has that changed? We talk to stakeholders, we conduct surveys to see what issues have come up over the past five years since the last plan, well, I think it's been a little less than that for here, uh, was updated. Uh, we also do a deep dive into operating statistics, and we look at all sorts of things like passenger trips per hour, which I think you've probably heard of from Joe's reports, and operating costs per trip, and we get down to levels of, you know, ridership by stop and by hour and by route, and this really helps us get a good vision of what routes are doing well and what times, and should we be realigning routes or anything like that? Uh, then the next step is when we go and analyze a wide range of alternatives, we call them, or potential changes to transit service to hopefully help out the folks riding the bus more, provide them more mobility, and make the transit system more efficient if we can. And after, um, we've gone through that analysis, and you, you heard that analysis, Joe presented that to you before, now we're at the phase where we're bringing together our preferred recommendations, which meet our standards and which meet our, our budgets, um, into a service and capital and financial plan. So that's what we're going to get into today. Another reminder that a lot of input from the community and stakeholders goes into this process, and that started fairly early on. We conducted an onboard...
Okay, we're back from closed session. Catherine, do we have anything to report out from closed session? Can Catherine hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay. Is there anything to report out from closed session?
No, no reportable action was taken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will adjourn closed session and and commence on open session, okay? Do we really start with public comment, you guys? I don't remember that. Yeah? Is there any public comment? Not seeing any public comment. We will move on to item three, which is the consent calendar. Three A is approved the minutes from August 25th. Three B is approved executive director's signature of the 2025 FTA certs and assurances. And three C is approved release of request for proposals for Williams Drive EV charging stations, charge management system.
I did have one question about three C, the charge management system. Joe, I get what Pacific Power is saying about using power during the off times to get a cheaper rate, stuff like that. I was curious about the the weight of the savings that we would get on the power usage versus how much this evaluation and RFP is going to cost us. I mean, are we, that was not in the in the agenda here as far as how much it's going to cost versus how much this RFP is going to save us. So do you have anything for us for that?
Yeah, it's a great question.
Or maybe we don't, maybe we don't know it right now.
Right, yeah, we won't know the cost until we open the proposals in like a month or so. I expect it's going to be, you know, in the Yeah. On audio.
Oh, that's better.
Yeah, sorry about that. I don't, we won't know exactly what the cost of having the charge management system will be added to the project, but the overall projects, the EV charging projects, like three, four million. So I think this will just be a small percentage on top of that. And if it can save us money each month on the electric bills to where we spend less on electricity than we were before on fossil fuels, which is kind of really how this, to me, if it's successful or not, it's going to kind of hinge on how much it costs us to charge. So if this helps us be successful with that and have a net savings in operating costs with EVs versus the current gasoline vehicles that they'll be replacing, I think it'll be well worth it, but we won't really know until we get our costs in. I don't think it's going to be hugely expensive. But yeah, we don't know yet until the RFP.
Yeah, I was just, my thought was like, if we just plug it in willy nilly and use power at peak times and get charged the most versus the off times, would we save a thousand dollars a year, ten thousand dollars a year? You know?
That's a good question. I think if you're closer to the latter one, you know.
If this RFP costs us a hundred thousand dollars, you know, that'd be like 10 years to pay off kind of thing. So I
I don't have that information.
So we just don't know yet, but so we're going to investigate how much this is going to save us.
Right, one thing I will say is it's not really, I don't think we really wrote it out too much in the document, but we received pro bono help with this RFP from Cal, from Caltrans, from their CalITP group. Because they want, they know we're kind of ahead of most of the other small rules on this particular aspect of this project. So they want to use us as a case study so they can help educate other smaller players that are coming along like us to maybe help them learn from our experience. So yeah, we've been getting free help, but you know, of course I have had to put some hours into it. But it's, to me, it's a terse of expense, so I do bill it to the, to the capital project, not to our
Good deal, okay. Caltrans wants to experiment on us, right on.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just kidding. With that, I will move that we approve the three items on the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Moza, could you pull the vote, please?
Director Short.
Yes.
Director Borges.
Yes.
Chairman, Vice Chairman Altman.
Yes. Thank you so much.
There's some noise talking somewhere.
Oh. Okay, let's move on to agenda item five, which is, oh, I should ask, is there any public comment on the consent calendar? We don't have any public, so I'm going to move on to number five. Short range transit plan, presentation of draft final SRTP and discussion.
Thank you, Vice Chair Altman, and thank you for being here tonight. Our presentation is going to be delivered by our consultant team tonight from LSC Transportation Consultants. We have Genevieve Evans and Chris Sterner, who've been our two primary points of contact, helping us with the plan. They're going to go ahead and walk us through the PowerPoint they prepared for this. This is the one that we had on last month, so nothing's changed since then. And then after this, next steps, we're hoping to get some feedback for the consultants on the draft final. And then this will be brought back to this board for approval at a meeting to be determined, but probably like mid-December. So give us time to incorporate and analyze the comments, get them in there, and then do a final for the board adoption before the end of the year. So unless there are any questions at this point, I'll turn it over to Genevieve.
All right. Thank you, Joe, and good evening, board. Again, I'm Genevieve Evans. I'm a principal with LSC Transportation Consultants. And Chris Sterner is also a planner at LSC, and he's done the bulk of the work. So he's going to interrupt me if I say anything wrong or provide more details. First, a quick reminder, I know you've been hearing about this process that we've been working on for about a year now. But what a short range transit plan is and what we're trying to achieve here is we think of a short range transit plan as a business plan for Redwood Coast Transit, and it should provide guidance for staff and the board as to what to implement and how to spend your money over the next few years. We start with a look at existing conditions. We look at where different folks who are likely to ride the bus live, has that changed? We talk to stakeholders, we conduct surveys to see what issues have come up over the past five years since the last plan, well, I think it's been a little less than that for here, was updated. We also do a deep dive into operating statistics. And we look at all sorts of things like passenger trips per hour, which I think you've probably heard of from Joe's reports, and operating costs per trip. And we get down to levels of, you know, ridership by stop and by hour and by route. And this really helps us get a good vision of what routes are doing well and what times, and should we be realigning routes or anything like that. Then the next step is when we go and analyze a wide range of alternatives, we call them, or potential changes to transit service to hopefully help out the folks riding the bus more, provide them more mobility, and make the transit system more efficient if we can. And after we've gone through that analysis, and you heard that analysis, Joe presented that to you before, now we're at the phase where we're bringing together our preferred recommendations, which meet our standards and which meet our budgets into a service and capital and financial plan. So that's what we're going to get into today. Another reminder that a lot of input from the community and stakeholders goes into this process. And that started fairly early on. We conducted an onboard passenger survey effort in September of last year, and we received about 113 onboard surveys, which I think represents about 40% of average daily ridership. So we think of as onboard surveys as a really good tool to hear from the people who ride the bus frequently, and what are their needs? We also spoke with bus operators, that's another way, they're on the front lines, they know what works and where people come and go. So that's a good input process. And then there's the online community survey effort conducted concurrently. And generally, you get more folks who don't ride the bus who respond to that survey. And I want to say we got 48 of those. There's also stakeholder interviews where we reach out one-on-one to different stakeholders, such as Tirma at LTC. We talked with the school district, and I think the Chamber of Commerce might be another one I'm missing. And then last there is we did present our initial alternatives when we'd first kind of done some of the analysis at the LTC SSTAC meeting. So early on in the process, we ran some numbers from the budget, looking forward, you know, inflating our costs and estimating revenues. And we came to the thought that the revenues are not keeping up with costs, and you know this, particularly as contract costs are going up. And that's not just Redwood, that's a lot of places. So we've developed a plan, kind of two plans. We have a constrained plan, which focuses on a balanced budget. This is essentially status quo services with some changes. So these are, we're pretty sure we can do this. But also an unconstrained plan. And one of the reasons for that, too, is the North State Express service, which you know is Route 20 is part of this idea of the North State Express service to get folks from all the way from Smith River down to the Bay Area as one good connection between Redwood Coast Transit, Humboldt Transit, Mendocino Transit. And so there may be some additional funding that that group, particularly Humboldt Transit Authority, is going after that could increase services related to North State Express. So that's a lot of what goes into the unconstrained plan, and we'll talk about that. And then, of course, we can't forget the capital side of things. And that's making sure that we have working vehicles, we replace them at proper intervals, and that we deal with these EV requirements that CARP has. We do have to make some assumptions when we create these plans. And these can be refined, of course, based on your input. We did inflate costs associated with the operations contract at a greater rate in the first few years of our financial plan, because driver wages are going up. But generally, we inflate costs at about 3% annually. There's also some additional costs involved there when the Crescent City, when the transit center gets online, that's going to be more expensive to operate and maintain. Ridership, as I was looking here through Joe's report at the end of your packet here, ridership has done great in the last few years, which is exciting. So we did assume that ridership is increasing, but we may have been a little conservative there with our estimates. So we'll refine our ridership estimates based on the latest numbers that Joe has for 2425. Okay, our constrained service plan. So this is our basically status quo. One thing that has already been implemented, but since it wasn't included when we started working on our status quo numbers here, it's considered a planned element, that's rerouting Route 20 to serve Walmart. So you know when Walmart was, excuse me, when Route 20 is no longer able to serve Lucky Seven, there were some changes at the north end. And at the same time, Route 20 was rerouted to serve Walmart in Crescent City, which is something that's come up in surveys, and it provides a great connection for folks up north, because that's their closest Walmart, and transit riders do need to visit Walmarts. However, this will increase costs a little bit due to the extra mileage, but we also think it's going to increase trips by about 600 trips a year, passenger trips, that is. Because, yeah, I mentioned the constrained nature, and you probably remember in the alternatives analysis, we went, we have a whole table of potential run cuts we could make if things get really bad, hopefully doesn't get to that. But Route 199 doesn't perform as well as some of the other routes, and it had, ridership has not increased. And it's serving a very rural community, so it's kind of a lifeline service, so we don't want to eliminate it completely. But to save a little bit of money, about a little less than $10,000 a year, if we made the summer service schedule similar to the winter service schedule, which is just two trips, two round trips a day, and eliminate that midday trip during the summer, we would have a pretty minimal ridership loss, we're estimating, of about 170 trips. And again, save $9,600 in annual operating costs. If we need to go farther than that to reduce service, to meet decreased revenues and increasing costs, the next service reduction that we've talked about, you know, we try and look for the ones that have the least ridership impacted with the greatest cost impact, is reducing Route 1 and 3 evening service. This is essentially the last run of Route 3, would end after 5:00 PM. And right now, actually, I think in your most recent schedule, Joe, that Route 1 only goes partway, that last 5:30 trip. So it would be eliminating that, just the very last run. And when we look at ridership by hour, it's not as great at that time period. And also you have a little bit of overlap from some of the other routes, because you know Route 1 and 2 serve similar routes. And Route 3 is also served by some of the stops on Route 20. So there are some options out there. It's definitely not a preferable thing, and we wouldn't want, we don't recommend implementing this unless things really get bad financially. The last thing there is a $2 flat fare for Route 20 and 199. So you're probably familiar with this, but again, part of the North State Express vision is to have this $2 flat fare just to make it easy. You want to encourage people to ride the bus. So instead of the zone fares that we have now on Route 20, which range from, say, $2.50 to $40, as far as you're going, it would be $2 when you get on the bus, and you could get to your next transfer point in Eureka. HCA has been pushing for this. Mendocino Transit, I believe, is going to be considering this at their board meeting on Wednesday. You're not considering the fare right now, this is just part of the planned element right now, but this is why it's in here. You would lose a little bit in fare revenue. I want to say about $14,000, but you would also be gaining some ridership, about 2,100 trips, we think, because it would encourage people to ride the bus. Any questions right now on the constrained service plan elements?
Any questions? No questions?
Great, we can do more after. Unconstrained, oh, and I forgot to mention if you, oh, excuse me, this is the constrained financial plan. And this refers to table 34, which is in your packet and in the report, if you would like to follow along. Overall, this constrained service plan will increase ridership very modestly, mostly due to serving Walmart now with Route 20. Operating costs will increase also a very small amount over status quo, 1%. And fare revenue will decrease by 2.7% because of that $2 flat fare. When we project our numbers out, we have a pretty good operating balance until 2030, when that would decrease to about $28,000, but we're still in the black there. This is assuming that we're using some SB 125 funds for operating expenditures, expenditures, which is a possible use. And this is assuming about 1.6 million in that funding source. LC top funds would continue to be used to subsidize free fares, that $2 flat fare, I forgot to mention that. That that 14,000 fare revenues, even though we're losing that fare revenues, we could be using LC top to cover that. CARES Act funding does run out in 2028, 2029. This is why, the reason why our revenues are decreasing and our operating costs are increasing. But this does allow a little bit of a surplus balance that you could transfer to operating reserves, which is always fiscally prudent. In terms of capital projects, obviously, they're more expensive, the transit center and Williams Drive facility improvements. We have a $200 deficit without some additional funding sources, but we're fairly close in terms of the dollar amounts that it requires for all these projects. We also have vehicle replacement factored in there, and a small amount, about 10,000 a year or so for passenger amenity improvements to continually improve bus stops and benches and shelters. Okay, so in a perfect world, graded HCA would get us a bunch of money for more North State Express service, and we could do some more things. Or perhaps there's another tranche of SB 125 or something that the state comes up with, and so we have a little bit more money to play with. The first one there is increase Route 1 and Route 2 frequency. So when you look at productivity, which is passenger trips per vehicle hour, and you look at Joe's report there at the end of your packet, Route 1 and 2, they're getting about 10 trips an hour, I think maybe even more now in some instances, which is really good for a rural transit system. So you want to build on that. And you have, in Crescent City, you had a lot of fairly transit dependent folks, and you have a good system, the way the city's designed, is it's possible to serve fairly well most of the city. So right now, we have hourly service. Half-hour service is the gold standard. It just makes it a lot easier to not have to think about a schedule and not have to wait a whole 50 minutes or so if you miss the bus. So for an extra about $25,000 or so, we are suggesting that you could add another bus on the Route 1 and 2 and provide half-hourly service for that. So it would be one bus interlining for those two routes, which is different than right now, Route 1 and 3 interline, and 2 and 4 interline as the same bus. But we would be adding an additional bus to just do 1 and 2 between the hours of 11 and 4 during peak times in the summer months. And we think this would increase ridership by about 2,600, 400 trips, 40 trips a year. Then, again, so Route 20, the vision of North State Express is to have a seven-day a week service. So that would mean implementing Sunday service. And none of the players really have too much of this going on right now. So we think that would cost, to have that connection down to Eureka, $6,000 a year, plus, since we don't have Sunday service right now, there would be additional costs for a dispatcher. But, and we think that would increase ridership above, you know, 1,000 trips a year. Complementing that, we should have local route Sunday service, similar to our Saturday service right now, which is just Route 2 and 4 on a little bit of a reduced schedule. And that would, you know, Saturday in Crescent City does quite well compared to weekday service. You get, and compared to other transit agencies. So we think that would give us a big boost in ridership, about 3,500 trips a year, but for a cost of $37,000 a year. And then lastly, Route 20 summer schedule year-round, to have that additional midday connection in Eureka. Right now, the bus goes Smith River down to Eureka, so that you can catch North State Express then. And then it's just, if you're coming back from the south, it's the evening connection back up to Smith River. This would be another one in the midday. That would increase our ridership about 2,000 trips a year, but it would cost about $91,000. Any questions there for the unconstrained elements?
Any questions? No questions at this time?
Okay, great. All right, our financial plan, table 37 in your report. With this unconstrained service plan, we would increase ridership about 13% over status quo. And, but operating costs would increase by 10% over status quo, and our fare revenue would, wouldn't decrease as much, we'd have, because we have this increase in ridership. When we project out the revenues and the costs by, you know, 20, 30, 31, we have a pretty good deficit there of 845,000. And the same assumptions in terms of SB 125, LC top revenue. And this deficit here is not accounting for any funding that would be set aside for a reserve. The capital program would be the same, essentially no changes there. And I think that is it. If you have any other additional questions, we would love your input. You can send your comments to me directly or to Joe, and then we'll incorporate that and work with Joe on a final plan.
Thank you very much. No other questions from the Board of Directors? You guys good? Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation. Appreciate it. And it doesn't look like we have any action to take. So we'll move on to agenda item six is presentation and discussion of fiscal year 2425 annual performance data.
Thank you. I'm going to take this one. It was a late addition to the report, but it was such good news I wanted to share. This is the performance part of our annual report, because we don't have our fiscal audit done yet. So the numbers that are used in here for cost figures are approximate, they're not audited yet. But the data shows that fiscal year 2425 was a huge comeback year for Redwood Coast Transit. We had been slow to recover from the pandemic over the last two or three years. Each year getting a little better, but this last year, ridership really, really took off. We didn't, we had just slightly more revenue hours produced. So we were putting out about the same amount of service, but it was much, much more, consumed much more readily than in prior years. And this was even after we did a, we did a slight fare increase at the start of the fiscal year, about a year ago this time. So overall, system ridership grew 27.2% from the prior year. We're now sitting a little over 100,000, which the last year that we eclipsed that mark, just about the same or maybe slightly better than this, was 2018, 19. So it brings us back closer to historical ridership levels before the pandemic, so that's exciting. As far as service levels, as mentioned, just slight change. So we're way down from kind of the glory years of 2010 through like 2017, when we were putting out 20,000 service hours a year. That's no longer even close to possible with the revenues. As Genevieve described, that our costs have went up so far, and the revenues have been fairly flat. So the new reality has us around 15,000, and that's where we were again this last fiscal year, up 1.9% from the year before. And I think it's mostly because we ran full service through September this last year, our summer schedule. And the year before, it might have been a little shorter than that. So I think that's where the extra hours came. Productivity during the hours we're running has been really good. So if you look at the next page, the third table is our annual riders per hour. And we jumped up to among our all-time best productivity-wise. So that was at about six and a half riders per hour, close to seven, as a system. So that includes your dollar ride and routes 199, even the lesser producing routes are all mixed in there. Our better routes are in double digits, as Genevieve and Chris mentioned. Our cost per hour went down a little, and that was, we got a break, a little bit of a break this last fiscal year on the fuel costs. The year before was even worse, so last year they abated a little bit, and that helped us out, because our labor costs didn't go down, so it had to be the fuel. So they went down slightly, about a dollar an hour over the year before, so that's good, at least it reversed the trend of increasing. So that's good news. Then, then the report heads on, look at three-year trends. Sorry about the formatting on this, I had some problems with it over the weekend, but the numbers are good. So if you look kind of at this table, it's the last three years, working from left to right. So our, you know, our operating cost is around 2 million, or at 2,060,000 this last year, down from 2. down from 2.1 the year before. Uh, so it was a 3% less, lower cost. Our cost per passenger went down even further because we had such a great year with the ridership. And our total passengers hit 103,551. The, uh, one thing to point out, and it's, uh, you know, not trying to just hit the, the positive highlights. Um, about the only negative is our fare box revenue, the bottom row as a percent of operating cost went down. And what happened there is, um, and I wanted to jump in earlier, but it was, I didn't want to interrupt. Um, we use our LC top money to allow the, to basically power our free fares program. So a lot of our riders don't have to pay when they board. So it's, it's great for them incentive to use the service. Uh, and then we count them though, and then bill them against what they would have paid and, and take it from that grant and then move that money across to fares. What happened the year before where we had almost 200,000 in fares with less ridership is we had two years worth of, of that LC top reimbursement hit in the same year. Cause there, there was a delay in the prior year. So that year, the, it really wasn't the fare box was so much better. It was, there was two years worth got moved over and, um, what do you call it? Ledger adjusted. So, um, that's why, and this year was only one. So the 127,895 includes the, the one LC top, um, grant money moved across. So, um, so fare box wise, we're still not hitting our 10% um, target that's been in place since 1974. Um, is anybody punishing any transit agencies for not making their 10% fare box ratio? No, but it's just something to be aware of. It could be, could come up in the future. Uh, then, then, then after this three year system wide, uh, metrics, we go into our route by route. So route one is our second best route, local route. Uh, it serves, uh, clockwise in a big loop around town. And it's, it had a very good year, um, about 11 riders per hour productivity. And ridership was up, uh, 31% on route one last year. Route two's been, uh, always been our best route. It, it handles most of the same territory as route one, except it does it in a, uh, counter clock. I think I'm getting, I might be confusing myself. Yeah. Clockwise, whereas route one is counter clock. So route two had a great year. We, uh, we're up, uh, 47% on the ridership and productivity, almost 50% up from the year before. And this one's getting about, uh, 16 riders per hour, which is phenomenal for a small town. Uh, route three, which goes, uh, from Front Street up North Crest, turns around up at Standard Veneer and comes back. Uh, it's our, it's our only true north, south route, but it, it, um, you know, it suffers from, it doesn't have as many trip generators along the route. Um, but it does provide connectivity and transport and mobility up in that area. Uh, it also had a good year last year, up 50% in ridership and 56% in productivity. But it started from a lower, you know, a lower, the bar was lower to start with. So it was a little bit easier to trounce the old numbers. Um, but it's doing very well. And we've been investing, trying to get some better bus stop signage up in there. So hopefully the momentum on route three continues. Main, main drivers of that route are the senior apartments and the senior center. Um, route four covers Birch Holland Hill, south part of 101, uh, between Front Street and, uh, down by Oak Valley Road. Um, this route's challenged. This is the route that didn't do that well this last year. So it's, uh, the, the, the fourth best of the, of the local routes. Uh, still not bad though, productivity, just under 10 per hour, which is good. Um, ridership went up 14%, so a little bit less than some of the other routes, but still had a good year. Um, the casino is a major, um, activity generator on that route. Um, this route struggles from a lack of bus stops on the 101, which is a major theme that I harp on a lot. Uh, and Caltrans has the power to prove or not though. So I'm working with Caltrans. So in the long run, if we can get a couple, three pairs of functioning bus stops along 101 on the south side of town, I think it'll help this route a lot. Uh, route 300 is our afternoon school tripper. Of course it's open to everybody in the general public, but it is designed for, uh, students at Crescent Elk Middle and Donord High School. Uh, so that route had, uh, another good year last year, down a little bit from the year before where it really went wild. Um, but still solid, um, the second best year ever for the route 300. And, um, yeah, I think one of, one of the constraints, we were talking about this at work today around the office is we, we fill the little bus we have. I don't mean little as in it's one of our tiniest, but our buses are not big in general. They're not as big as the big yellow school buses or the urban buses you would find, uh, in town. So we're a bit capacity constrained, and I think that's what you're seeing here on the 300 is we fill it with vehicles we have. The only way we could really gain more market share and carry more students in the afternoon would be to either add a second vehicle, which doubles our costs. Uh, not, you know, a second smallest vehicle, or we could try to use, we have 35 foot freight liners that are nearing retirement. We could put them on light duty. But what, we'd need to separate that piece of work out so the driver would take that bigger bus on this, this little 45 minute piece of work and then bring it back. So that would be a way, a way to allow some market growth on the 300 to see if there's some latent demand. Cause the kids talk, once they know that it's so full, they can't sit down, the market gets capped. Um, so I think that's what's happening here with the 300. It's been very popular. It's just, we don't have a very big bus. But I think we're, we're, we're seeing maybe the students reacting to crowdedness. Uh, so 300 had a good year though, so we're very pleased with it. Uh, moving on to the regional routes, route 20 did well. I mean, not, not the kind of growth figures that we saw on some of the other routes, but, uh, ridership was up 20% and productivity almost 50% higher than the year before. So that's, that's certainly something to be proud of. Um, this is the route that runs from Smith River. Well, now it, it still goes to Smith River. We have our meeting point now at La Jolla with, uh, with Curry Public Transit. And that's worked out okay after a little, you know, a month or so of growing pains. Uh, we, we are in talks with, uh, Caltrans is facilitating some discussions with the, uh, with the tribe and, and to see what, what else could be done up there to maybe create. Um, cause Curry would rather meet us up closer to the casino than down at La Jolla, which I understand because it's an extra couple of miles each way for them coming down from Brookings. So we're still working with Caltrans and the tribe to see what can be done there. But overall though, route 20 is doing, doing quite well. It does consume a lot of our resources though. That's a common theme that you'll see throughout the SRTP is the regional route takes up almost half of our hour for the year. And, you know, ridership's obviously not as high as some of the local routes, so that can be an issue. And then, uh, towards the end, route 199, whose stats were not so good. Um, we were down, this route was actually down this last year when all the other routes were up. Uh, this one was down 13.7% from the prior year. Um, we had a couple of good years with that route and it turned out that, uh, some of that was summer recreational trip taking. We, we had some groups that were using us to get out to the river and then, uh, then, you know, playing in the river. And then, so we were, we were getting some nice group trips there for a couple of summers, but those went away in the last couple of years. They're no longer using us. I don't know if they're not rafting the river. I'm not sure what all the, the story behind that is, but we don't have those groups anymore and the numbers definitely show. So yeah, so route 199 is, is a coverage route that, you know, certainly is not doing, not doing as well as we. And then last is our Dollar Ride service on the last page. Uh, Dollar Ride had a, a good year. Uh, ridership grew, but not exponentially. And we don't want it to grow exponentially, um, because it can't be delivered a lot cheaper than it is. So, um, the ridership increased by 13% and, uh, but productivity went down by 10%, which is an interesting fact. Um, not sure how to explain that exactly. Maybe some wrinkle in the data. I'll look further into it. Um, but productivity, when there are gaps in the schedule, the drivers, we don't send them home all the time. So sometimes they're just sitting around waiting if they get a cancellation or if nobody booked anything in like between the one and two o'clock hour. We, you know, keep them around and then they go do the two o'clock pickup. But gaps in the schedule can definitely hurt Dollar Ride productivity. So that's it for the annual report, performance measures. Then we'll bring back the same numbers, then plug in the audited financials and that'll probably be in a couple of meetings. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I just got one with, uh, in relation to the school tripper. First, first I'd like to tell you thank you for, um, arranging the school tripper to, uh, bring some students over here to the rec center. There was a, you know, when that first got going, there was a couple of little hiccups. You were right on it, knew exactly what was going on with it. I thought it was really commendable of you to, to know that kind of intricacies about the route. Um, so, so thank you for that. But you mentioned the, um, possibility that maybe we're just too full. And, uh, you also mentioned the, uh, two freight liners, you know, the soon to be retired trucks. Um, in my mind, those, those two 450,000 plus mile rigs are kinda, kind of free to experiment with. Um, so if we think that our ridership is going down because of our capacity, why not just throw those old buses in and see if it increases our, our ridership? I mean, if, if one breaks down, then are we really at a loss? We're about to retire the sucker anyway. So, um, yeah, they're old, they're 2013s, you know, so we've, we've used them well. I just kind of was thinking what's, what's your thought process there? Why don't, why don't we just throw them in and see if it works?
I agree. Uh, I'll, I'll, I will try to make that happen. We'll, um, behind the scenes, there's some work. We need to make sure that the person that's driving that piece is not coming off something that that, that bus wouldn't be appropriate to use on. So yeah, let me work with operations and see if we can juggle the cut and have them come leave from the yard with the freight liner and then come back to the yard after the 45 minutes with that freight liner. Then they could do, you know, cause if we don't, those buses do have turning issues and running around downtown is not ideal, but the capacity would be worth it to, to, to add. So let me work on that and, and bring back an update in December. We'll see if we can do it.
There's some intricacies there, obviously that a lot of us don't think about. And you got a pretty good handle on it. So that was, that was all. I just was thinking we could throw that in there, but if it's too cumbersome, I get that.
No, I think we can do it. Well, I'll, I'll report back if, if we can, we'll give it a try with between now and our next meeting and see how it goes. Um, cause I know I've dealt with full tripper buses too. And word gets around, the kids get around and they tell their parents, oh, it's too crowded. It's, you know, and all of a sudden they find other rides and they just, you know, so we wanna, if we're gonna keep growing it, we want to make a change quick so the word doesn't get around.
I thought we could, you know, try and hit a half a million miles on one of those rigs maybe.
Yeah, that would be good. We're getting there.
Okay. Thank you so much. Um, let's move on to item seven, discussion and approval of pilot CTS A Local Medical Trips Partnership Program with DNHD.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Altman. This, this, uh, item is, uh, continued from last month. Um, we were approached, we, we started partnering with the Donord Healthcare District a couple of years ago on the south, maybe three now, on the South Oregon Medical Shuttle, where, uh, we're marketing it together, working, and then at the end of the year, splitting the, the, the operating costs with them. This would be, this would be a second project that would be kind of similar in that, um, the district believes that there's folks that are not accessing local medical care. So this is not so much about taking folks to referrals out of town. This is most more about getting people to their local physicians and medical care. They believe there's, uh, an impediment on that with the current Dollar Ride system. You know, and just so you understand how our current Dollar Ride works, anyone can use it, but if you want to pay the lower ADA fare, you gotta go through an application process, which is a paper application. It's like three, four pages. It's pretty easy. You submit that, I look it over, call you if I have any questions, and then we get you in. Um, but, you know, maybe some people don't want to go through that. May, but then maybe six bucks is too much for them. So I think there, there could be some, some truth to that as well as maybe some folks don't even know about Dollar Ride. They don't know. So the idea behind this project would be to, that, uh, the healthcare district would, would help subsidize these trips if one end or the other is a medical facility. So it could be home to doctor's office, could be doctor's office to Safeway, for example. It could be, but it couldn't be Safeway to home. So they wouldn't subsidize that, that third leg of the trip, for example. But if one of the origins or destinations were at a medical facilities, it's going to be up to us and our software to keep good track of this. Cause it's gonna, then we'll be, we'll need to create reports that show all the trips that touched a medical facility that are eligible for the, for their subsidy. Then we'll invoice the, the healthcare district, uh, kind of according to the table that's on the bottom of page one. So kind of trying to make sense of that. So currently our fare is, uh, second from the left. So it's $6 for the general public and $2 if you're ADA eligible. That's for a one-way trip on Dollar. Um, the new fare with this promotion with the partnership, if there's a medical facility on the pair, the O and D pair, it would be, it would go down in half. So it'd be $3 for general public, and this is for the end user. So they have to pay this at the time of the ride and $1 if they're ADA eligible. So it basically cut their, uh, user side expense out of pocket in half. But even that, we gotta be careful. And that's why I was resistant to this project when, when it was first brought to us is like anything that we do to increase our Dollar Ride trips, the fare only covers a minuscule part of the cost of the trip, which is like $40 per trip. So we also asked that, you know, in order to, to consider this, we would need some sort of operating subsidy from the healthcare district in addition to them just helping the rider get a, a cheaper fare. So, um, we come up with the idea of they, they subsidize the, the, the rider's, uh, user fare. Then they also kick in an amount to us to help with the increased operating costs that this program's likely to, to cause. Um, because we do believe it'll lead to more Dollar Ride usage. Um, so their support to us would be $5 for that. So the total, uh, healthcare district, uh, commitment to each trip would be $8 if it's a general public trip or $6 if it's Dollar Ride. And that's a $5 subsidy to us because we gotta cover that 40 bucks as much, at least a little more than we do now. Uh, and plus the user side subsidy of $3 or $1, depending on whether the person's ADA eligible. So it would, um, it would help us, you know, it would, we're taking a risk that we would expand Dollar Ride, which could cause us financial problems down the road. We don't know how much demand this is going to induce around town that's not already using the service. I mean, the services are there for them. It's maybe more of a marketing and awareness thing, but maybe this will help. So the, then the user, if they're already ADA eligible or they go through the application process, if they're going to a medical facility or back, it'll be a dollar for them. So that may help with some more usage. That's the goal of the district. And then it would help us get a little bit more support from them. And then we'll just need to keep monitoring, keep a close eye on it in case it starts to grow too much. But I, I don't think it will. That's why we're recommending the board approve us, uh, try it as a, as a pilot project and see how it goes. Um, we're prepared to start it up this winter. Um, you know, it's kind of late in October now, so maybe December 1st might be a starting date we could do. Um, this is page two kind of, so that's the program as proposed to try the new program.
Hang on, Joe, I have a question on that.
Yes, sir.
So, um, just so I understand the numbers right, uh, current rider fare is $6. With their support, their, the new rider fare is going to be $3 plus the fare support of an additional $3 plus a $5. So each rider would then be a total revenue income of $11. Is that correct? Instead of what we were getting six before?
No, close though, close. So we're getting six before, so six today with the, if, assuming the trip was going to or from a medical facility, the rider would only pay three. Uh, the other three would be paid by the district plus a $5 support stipend for us. So they would pay us eight, the rider would pay us three, so it'd be 11 total out of.
So we're, so it would go to an $11 fare where it used to be just a $6 fare?
We would receive 11, yes. The rider would, would only pay the three. So.
But prior, prior to this, it was a $6 rider.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
For three.
Okay. Okay, that was all ahead.
Okay. No, it's a good question. It is kind of confusing. Uh, page two kind of looks at how this fits in with our other CTS A programs. Can we afford it? Kind of question, which I think we should all ask ourselves. Um, so this is our current CTS A programs. Um, remember our CTS A is 5% of whatever our fluctuating TDA allocation is annually. So it's been in the ballpark of 35 to 45,000 per year. Um, currently we're spending about 25. Um, currently we're spending about twenty five-ish, twenty five, twenty six of that on the current programs that we have. But I will say the South Oregon Medical Shuttle's been growing a little every year. We still haven't seen maybe the end of growth of that. So we do need to remember that that program's not yet done, not yet matured. Um, but so that would indicate that we have maybe ten to twenty thousand to play with. Um, so then uh, this, the, the third of column on the right is at maturity. So we inflate, you know, some of these to grow uh, a little bit more, more travel training. Hopefully we're success, successful in, in getting more folks travel trained. The ADA eligibility, it's been way below projection all these years since we started it in twenty twenty. But it could start to grow, especially um, you know, if this program starts to bring new people in that wanna apply for the ADA discount. So anyway, uh, so they could rise up and consume all our, this might be the last program the CTS A can, can fund for sure. Um, but it looks like under most scenarios, it should fit in our budget. Uh, if it goes a little over budget, it'll come out of the RCTA regular Dollar Ride. Um, so it's not like we couldn't pay for it, but it would start to impact our overall, our CTA budget. What you're looking at on page two is just our CTS A program. So we think it's sustainable under the CTS A, but we'll have to keep an eye on it and report back annually and let you know how it's going. If it gets too popular, we might have to make some.
Okay. I uh, I would make a motion to approve the launch of the pilot local medical shuttle, the DAR project as soon as November first, twenty twenty five.
And I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment? Not seeing any public comment. Clerk, please pull the vote.
Director Borges.
Yes.
Director Short.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Altman.
Yes. Moving along to item eight, which is announcements. Does the board have any announcements? Joe, you have an announcement?
I've got an announcement or two. I just wanted to mention um, the, we're working with the state of California and the fairgrounds uh, and the county on uh, our ground lease. We uh, that upon which our lands, uh, our, our building sits on there at one forty Williams Drive. Um, we, we had a twenty year lease with an option to extend that we were executing. Uh, and we're, one of the things that we wanted to change was the extent of the lease hold, like on the ground. So what we've been paying for the last twenty years is where our fence is at now, sort of. Uh, fences are at, I should say. Uh, we wanna adjust that a little bit because it's been found out that the, the county has an easement for Williams Drive and they wanna do some improvements, a, a pathway up there. So that would be.
Recording stopped.
Thank you. Um, so anyway, so we wanna get the extents right, pull the, hope, just use what we need and not lease any areas that we don't need. And that, that might help with the cost. Uh, so anyway, just wanted to get that out there that it's in progress. It was discovered that the original lease was with the county of Donord, not with Redwood Coast Transit. I'm guessing it was cause in the formative year, in that first year of the agency's life. So the county probably went ahead and entered into the agreement, the Board of Supes, uh, rather than the RCTA director. So we caught that and so that'll be redone. So there may possibly be a need for the county to take action to terminate the lease. So we're, we're following, we're, we're asking for leadership from the state guy at GSA that's doing the, taking the lead on the lease for the fairgrounds. Um, and I haven't heard back if, if, if Board of Supes needs to take any direct action to end it now or send a letter wishing to terminate. So we'll terminate the old lease and start a brand new one in RCTA's name with the correct extents and at the higher, you know, at the higher rates that are there now. Anyway, so that, I wanted to talk about that. Um, and then. Um, the other announcement is we, we are getting blue buses. So we have three orders in the tunnels. We're gonna see some new vehicles finally come to help out our fleet this, this winter. And they will be blue, as we talked about a couple of meetings ago. And we, we actually designed a new logo that'll look good on top of the blue, cause we had some blue that would've just, you know, the logo thing. Anyway, but, so we've been working on that. So we're excited. Those buses could be arriving as soon as December. Um, that's very exciting and we'll get, I don't have any pictures of the new logo to show, but I'll bring them next. That's all I have.
Uh, before I adjourn, the um, I did have someone ask me about these medical uh, trips to uh, Grants Pass. And I noticed on here it says one-way trip. So how do you, how do you get back?
Oh, it's, it's, most of our trips are round trips, but some are one-way. Like if they're going to the, to Rogue Valley Airport, we do some one-ways there. Um, but yeah, it's a round trip. The price is just on one way, so it's just double if you do a round trip.
And that's dial-a-ride, so you call in and?
Yeah, you book your trip in advance. We go on Tuesdays and Thursdays in the morning and return in the late afternoon in general. I mean, if, if you're the only, we've moved it around a little to customize it for certain passengers if, if that's the only people going that day. But yeah, in general, leave in the morning and book it at least a day or two in advance, maybe a week. We, we take reservations up to a week or so in advance.
And the reason why I couldn't answer it was because I couldn't wrap my head around. The question was, does the bus driver just wait around for your medical appointment to be over? Cause some medical appointments are quite lengthy.
True. Uh, we, 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 we ask that the customer books their medical appointment late morning, early afternoon. So yeah, we get them there in time for their morning appointments. And then the driver takes a break and hangs out and then starts picking them back up again around like two or so. So the midday appointment's key to the success of using our.
Hmm, thank you.
Like we love eleven o'clock, eleven thirty appointments or like one, something that we, where they can be wrapped up by two or three and so we can go.
Great.
But we do stay around there and wait for them and make the return trip.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a lot better than, I'm, I'm on the board of directors. Couldn't even answer that question, you know? Terrible. Okay, so um, number nine is adjourned to the next RCTA board meeting, which will be determined.
Yeah, do you guys wanna talk about that or what's the most efficient way to schedule with you guys that we can?
Christmas Eve, you guys like Christmas Eve or?
Yeah, Christmas Eve's open, oh, thank you. Just kidding. Um, but yeah, we were, we were scheduled for Monday before Thanksgiving and it could've worked. But with the CMS RFP, we need a little more time with the short-range plan comments that we're gonna send them. They need a little more time. So it's best to cancel and do a special December meeting. Like mid-month. Okay. Works good. Are there any like no-go weeks during mid-December that you won't be around?
Not me.
All right, I'll send out some, I'll, I'll schedule by email. You don't have to. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you guys would be okay with that. I knew you were looking forward to the Thanksgiving Monday meeting.
So what's your proposal? What date? Twenty, oh wait.
That week of the eighth? I can try for that. That would work pretty good. With the fifteenth possibly, or is that gonna be? Eighth looks pretty good for everyone.
Uh, I have to check and see when our council meeting is.
Okay. We have to dodge.
I don't have it memorized.
The ninth? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Eighth or ninth and that'd be.
That eliminates any doubt. Make it. Oh. Donord Local Transportation Commission? That's on a Tuesday, right? Oh, that's the first.
What time do they usually meet? That daytime?
Oh, it's way before, never mind. It's three o'clock.
Oh, okay. I know Fridays are, you know, we don't like Friday meetings. Would, would like the twelfth possibly work at the end of that week? Just in case.
I'm fine with that.
All right.
I could, I could ask the city manager about the eighth and then get back to you and then.
Okay, that'd be great.
Well, it fluctuates around, I mean. Okay, the eighth it is. I hope. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thanks, you guys. There's nothing for you to sign tonight, Ray, so you got off easy there.